Thank you. So if everyone's seated, I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, and second.
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. That takes us to the first item on the agenda, the public comment. If you'd like to comment, say approach the microphone, but we don't have one set up. So you can stand where you're comfortable, come to the front if you'd like, keep your comments to three to five minutes, please identify yourself by name and the district that you come from, and address your comments to the board. Anyone that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Dolphy. Sit down.
I'll keep you here, ma'am, sorry.
Oh, that's great. Thank you so much.
I might repeat, by reading something from a county, some page coming in the Red Bank News of February 9th, 2004, the headline was, "The County's Plan is in the Hands of the Supervisors. The Compliment Rappahannock County Comprehensive Plan is ready to be approved by the Board of Supervisors at a time when running government and public interest feels the county faces the biggest, greatest land development in its history. As Commissioner, Robin Henry said one day, 'It's only a matter of time until they present a planned community and test us.' Here's a commission to consider making 50 acres instead of 25 as a minimum size for a lot subdivision. Charles Stripmanner, where his colleagues study Rappahannock's villages, with an interest in setting up their borders, says all the villages need to engage special encounters to assist in planning for the future. Perhaps it's still there for the future, so. Rappahannock has been committed to maintain its beauty as a solid ground character over allowing indiscriminate development. Flash forward to October 2020. The intention of the Board of Supervisors 16 years ago was to preserve the beauty of rural Rappahannock. That's been achieved through the development of the property. The current draft of the comprehensive plan is focused not only on preservation and protection of Rappahannock's natural beauty, but also on economic growth. We thank the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors for their leadership. Part of the joy of living in Sperryville is the diversity and independence of the people who live here. The renaissance of the town of Sperryville is related to the investment in high work of its residents. The current draft of the comprehensive plan defines the boundaries of each of the five villages to the initial Sperryville boundary filed in the policy of the sewer system. Do we need a boundary at all? Given our history of boundary, shouldn't it be a part of the community? Where do we draw those lines? There's many implications. What is the effect on homeowners within and adjacent to the commercial district? Is a boundary from all of each child in the village? Activities brought about from surveys done by the Sperryville community owners have freed new life into the community. The boundary makes it easier to get various projects such as traffic coming and continue to grow in welcome trails. How will a commercial district define, promote, and enhance diversity of businesses that make them develop all of our citizens? Are there implications for housing? Subdivisions have always been discouraged, thank you, Ms. Rappahannock. To retain Rappahannock, what is the actual capacity of this Sperryville 34-year-old sewer system? Rappahannock is a county with a definite trend toward an age and population. We believe for housing, it's not qualified. We're not how to seek projects such as co-housing relocated. Decisions will take into account the needs of residents and call the goals of retaining scenic beauty, protecting natural waters and resources, and the region. These were but a few of the questions related to the definition of our village and support of the area. In fact, we're requesting the formal meeting to petition a mandatory signature of the village. We need this sewer system now and recently substituted as a designation under the value for the comprehensive plan. The planning commission to develop a comprehensive vision for Sperryville is my lead to advance. It will request an independent analytical analysis of the existing sewer system, assess the capacity and flow and infiltration. Delay any rezoning of the one nearest to Sperryville until adoption of the comprehensive plan, thus avoiding any state charge or spot zoning. I'm not representing a group of people, but we've passed around this petition and asked people what they thought. And people want to contribute positively to the development of the village down here. I feel that's our responsibility. And there's so many implications to this in terms of what it means to the lay of the globe, and our citizens' vote for it.
Thank you, Ms. Dolphy. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
I'm Nina Ramos Hampton, District. In the planning commission meeting some short time ago, I made some suggestions, small points, to the comprehensive plan. Nothing exciting or unusual, but the planning commission was kind enough to pass most of those suggestions off to you all, and I hope you will consider them all. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, Sophia. I hope this doesn't impede anybody to go really strongly. The county's going in the wrong direction by deciding to switch trajectory from fiber to the home for all wireless network or an authority that's wireless or anything else is wireless, or telecommunications plan. The COVID-19 pandemic has been used to try and force us all onto wireless with no oversight of these companies, into losing any of our constitutional rights, and into looting areas such as threat or forced vaccines, forced tracking, a possible future cashless credit system for money, where only the obedient can buy or sell, and this seems to be only getting worse. For anyone who's done the research, not read the propaganda, or is sensitive to radiation, it is a direction which will blanket us in a wireless surveilled prison and destroy our health and our environment, and mainly our communities. Fiber to the premises, the fiber that backs up all wireless, is the safest and fastest and least tractable technology. It was the original mission statement to do this. Even if it takes time, fundraising, waiting on RUC's Rappahannock Cooperative's decision, giving them time to come to a decision, planning long term, I think we should go with what's right. We shouldn't take a short term fix. If you go with outside companies coming in from outside counties that have wireless plans, they're going to propose a wireless plan here, the wireless will affect everyone, especially if it's to 95% of the county. And those who know they would be made sick or sensitive to it should have a veto on that, and they should have a voice in it. It shouldn't be forced radiation on every home. Our county and the residents here are worth protecting. Our environment is worth protecting, even if it's not politically correct, and the proliferation of wireless toxic technology will destroy that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Matthew Black.
It's hard to talk and breathe really at the same time, so. Sorry. I'll try to stand somewhere where I don't spray. Back up. My name is Matthew Black. I reside in the Piedmont District. And I'm going to follow up on Barbara Dolphy's comments. That is how we define our village boundaries and the role of potential old maps. Now, I'll leave, I've got a statement here, and I'll leave with you, but I will read from it just to be to the point. Amendments to the draft comprehensive plan propose to use maps to define village boundaries. In general, this seems like a reasonable suggestion that would add clarity in answering questions like, what comprises a village such as Amosville or Sperryville? This kind of clarity would be useful to exempt the county wanting to encourage and allow future development in the villages. For example, a village boundary could mark where the minimum 25-acre lot could be made smaller. The use of zoning in this way, of course, would create incentives and allow for greater density within village boundaries, and perhaps lead to more reasonably priced housing. So what's the best way to define our villages from the perspective of map overlays? How tight, how wide should the boundaries be? Should the maps be governed by infrastructure such as available water treatment capacity? Should be governed by topography, existing roads, preferences of village residents, commercial interests, or what? How would our ability to control or manage future development within our villages be affected by officially sanctioned maps? It's not clear to me and others that the maps proposed in the amendments to the plan, that is, the comprehensive plan, reflect the outcome of any analysis or agreement among county residents. I and others believe the village maps should be the output of local planning processes rather than an ad hoc set of definitions. Apparently proposed maps seem more like an assertion than a result of public consensus. Using Sperryville as a case in point, it's not clear that the sewer system should be the basis for defining village boundaries. Perhaps it should be smaller because of other factors such as traffic concerns or sustainable access to well water. Then it raises questions like, how much development is enough or too much? What kind of development should be encouraged and permitted, and so on. All of these will influence the shape of the village's boundaries. For Sperryville, the capacity of the existing sewer system is central to the proposed map. Yet there's very little hard evidence on the condition of this 30-year-old system. What future maintenance will be required? How many additional units could the current system support? Could it be enlarged? I've heard that 100 additional units could be supported by the current treatment plan. I called up one of the authority board members and asked, is that the position of the board? And the answer was no, that was just an assertion, and it does not reflect the views of the authority. Clearly, an engineering study is needed to assess both available capacity and the structural condition of the sewer and treatment system. So this critical underpinning for basing the proposed Sperryville map is suspect. For this reason alone, any map used to define Sperryville should await the results of an engineering study. As I've mentioned, maps that identify villages are likely to be used to encourage future development in the villages. From a county-wide perspective, maps may have the effect of steering development away from some villages and toward others. For example, the map of Amosville seems very small, while that of Sperryville seems quite large. Is that the desired intent? Regardless, reliance on official maps may create unintended consequences. The county, that is, you guys, should consider the combined effect of all village maps together, how they interact, before BOS gives its stamp of approval to any set of maps. As a way of demonstrating that the concerns that I've been voicing and a few others are broader than just what I'm saying, we've collected a number of signatures roughly about 100. Not as a formal petition, but just to say that there's a broader base of the concerns that we are stating tonight and the last time that the board met. And we'll leave those with you, Barbara, as well. So I'd like to end where I began. Maps can be quite helpful in clarifying boundaries, but maps should be the output of a planning process in order to make them most useful, most accurate, and most consistent with what we want as residents of Rappahannock County. Thank you. Are you going to call your petition?
Is there a copy for it?
Yes.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
In line with emphasis on scenic values of a county, it seems we should be talking somewhat about revitalization. It's been a while since I went through the plan, but it don't really look long that we'd be placing any emphasis on that. I think, you know, if we were large enough to have an economic development authority, chances are today they would be working on trying to get the apple packing shed in the River District sold and back into use instead of sitting there as an empty resource. So I wonder if we really have not considered revitalization as another important aspect of what we look at as we go forward. And the other thing I would just like to echo Matthew about the maps, that if there are to be maps, it seems like there should be some kind of consistent rationale for them. And when I look at Amosville, this little tiny map that doesn't have much in it, and the rest of the maps, it's like, what is the rationale behind these? It's very hard to figure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanez. Is anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Alex.
I'm Alon Shaw. I'm here to speak just as an individual, but I do happen to be on the sewer authority. And I think I'm maybe the source of this 100 home assertion. So I just want everybody to know. But I think a couple of things have been said about the sewer system, and I don't want to get into the village boundaries or the development of Sperryville, because that's not really my interest. It's just simply to say that the sewer system is 34 years old or 35 years old. That is true. What people don't seem to follow is the fact that it's not the chronological age, but the condition that is more important. And for a couple of reasons, this plant, which is above ground, all steel, and so it can be refurbished in its entirety, which we've done, two-thirds of it, and have another third to go. So it can be refurbished, it can be refinished at fairly reasonable expense. So what basically I can say about the life of the plant is that it will exceed the life of the permit. And what I mean by that is we have nutrients which are going to have to be processed and treated going forward. And we've gotten an initial phase where we're doing some testing, but in five years or three years or whenever the permit is renewed, we might get five, we might get 10 years in order to figure out how to treat the nutrients. Now, this will require a substantial, you know, increase in the plant equipment at that time. So it could possibly require a new plant, but I, you know, not necessarily. It could be some additional treatment that's added. So the condition of the plant right now is very good, actually. And what's interesting is, a couple of years ago, we were getting on with somebody, trying to get them to not do so much grease in the system, and they turned this into DQ with a complaint. So that yielded an immediate spot investigation, which we came up with no problems and a very good inspection. So it wasn't like the kind of inspection that you prepare for or study for for two weeks. It was call one evening, we'll be there in the morning. And it did very well. Now, yes, there's some maintenance that needs to be done. But the life of the plant, I mean, the 10 or 15 years that I would say probably is what's going to end up being the permit life is there, and I don't think, that certainly, in my opinion, is not a problem. And some maintenance would need to be done. Now, the other aspect of this is there are some properties, and I think there's a hot-button property that may have triggered a lot of this discussion, which I'm not really going to take a position on. But I will say that development in or around Sperryville that can be done now under the current zoning, there are a number of parcels that don't necessarily have to be hooked up to the system. But for some economic reasons, it would be very desirable, probably, if that's all you're looking at, would be to hook these new users up instead of making them do drain fields, which would be about the same expense to them. But they could hook up, they could pay our connection fee, pay our user fees, and there is substantial capacity now. I won't assert 100, but it's substantial. And I think Matthew is correct, and Barbara, you said it too. It is a good idea to do an assessment, and I think that that would be reasonable. I'm not sure, I don't know that there's any huge development planned, or even ones I've potentially heard about aren't that big. So I think we have time. I think it's great to get all this information that you're talking about. But I do think to discount the plant as junk because it's 34 years old is not accurate. And so I think some of these, you know, conditions that we're making assumptions on should be tested for accuracy and reasonableness. That's basically my point. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Jill Bobarski. I'm Union County District. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the planning commission to have almost completed this huge task of coming up with the draft comprehensive plan. It should have been done long ago, should have been done three times till now, and all the other commissioners somehow couldn't do it, but now it's completed. And I really like you, I urge you to adopt this draft or maybe slightly amend the version, because this 2020 version or this draft is so much better, and it includes a lot more updated items than 2004. And now I see all the, a lot of enthusiasm about the maps and a lot of other things that's included in this map, so, in this plan. So now you can make this the basis, and then let's use this energy to work on the next revision that should be coming up. But as a base, this is so much better than 2004. When you start to tweak on this, then it's going to take another year, two months. It's so much better to adopt now and then work on this basis. So thank you for the time, commission and the board, and I really urge you to adopt this. There seemed to be a lot of talk about the maps, but maps actually define how the writing is, how they, you know, like old survey maps, okay, from the south tree go hand chains to the east, and then turn, you know, it's that kind of description was 2004 comprehensive plan regarding the villages. But now it's somehow defined. Now you have the map, you can work from this and revise it for the next revision. So I urge you to adopt it without delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
My problem with the current draft of the comprehensive plan is that it leaves out totally the people who want a fiber to the home. It leaves out the dangers of wireless fiber, I mean wireless technology. And it seems to be very propaganda that we want these companies on all the reasons we can't object to it, all the this, all the that, and lost in there is the truth. And I feel there are some untruths in the plan, really based on ignorance. I actually did not rewrite the plan. I asked you guys to rewrite it, and I'll be good, but I gave you some amendments tonight that would incorporate the other side as well. We won't incur a lawsuit. We won't challenge what David said. It's basically small additions that say there are people who believe this, and this is the reason they believe it. And they need to be included in the comprehensive plan. And I know you can't, you haven't read it yet, and just because, but it is small changes. It's not rewriting. Much of the plan is fine. I don't know why we have columns and columns and columns that have a high cell towers, but hiding them does no good. It's the same cell tower. So anyway, please read that. I hope it will be incorporated. I'm too thrilled I'm representing people like Lon Maxwell and Christopher Spanwick, the weekends family, and some other people.
Is there someone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Bruce.
On the sewer authority, we have done a fair amount of research and study of the engineering plans upon which the sewer was built. And I feel like, at length with Alex, I understand where he's coming from, but I feel like if we had substantial growth in Sperryville, we would strain the existing system. I believe there are about 180 users or 180 taps, maybe 300 EDUs. The sewer authority is just that. It's like a little separate form of government. The board supervisors does not tell it what to do. It raises its own money. It spends its own money. If it needs to fix something significant, it has to raise its own money. No Rappahannock County tax dollar will go to the sewer authority unless the board of supervisors choose to participate. Now, a comprehensive plan seems to me is directing growth to Sperryville because the planners have said, well, that's where it should be because you have sewer system. So if you put those two thoughts together, one, you won't pay for, you're not likely to pay for anything that we in Sperryville, 182 of us, are having to pay for. You're not likely to contribute anything to any extra cost that might occur there. And who's going to pay for it? 182 of us who belong to the system, who are hooked up to it? Could we possibly have another Catlet situation? Catlet is having to rebuild theirs, and it's a $6.7 million project. I don't know if Fokker County is going to kick in and help Catlet or not, but if we have to put four, five million dollars into our system, would you all, say taxpayers of Rappahannock County, would be willing to help me in Sperryville? So I think that we need to think about the planning commission, the comprehensive plan, directing growth to Sperryville when we have what I believe could be a critical issue with the sewer system. I also think there's sections in our comprehensive plan where you use the word encourage, encouraging growth, encouraging new development, encouraging development around these villages. And that's where you're using your maps. I think everywhere it says anything about encouraging development, you should delete from the comprehensive plan. Incidentally, when I think about the sewer system, it goes all the way up to what we call Hearthstone School. That's almost to the Shenandoah National Park. From there, the first mile of the sewer system comes through a one and one-half inch pipe. That's a pipe about this big. This serves about one mile, this side pipe serves about one mile of the first mile of the sewer system. This is smaller than the pipe in your kitchen sink. This is smaller than the pipe in your kitchen sink. The next nine tenths of a mile is two inches. That is the size of a pipe in your sink. So the first two miles of the sewer system, first one and a half inch, then two inches. As it gets closer to town, there's a three-inch pipe. As it gets to the center of town, it goes on down the plant, it's a four-inch pipe. So I think that we have general commercial zoning all the way up to Hearthstone School, that is a growth potential. I think that, I just think I'm worried about the sewer system, and I think that the planning commission, I mean the board supervisors should not encourage development around our village. You should ask the authority or encourage the authority to get the engineering study done. The only other thing that's apparently different, this is a general commercial area, when you change that on the proposal, you just drew a straight line across from somewhere below the Atlantic Union Bank over to Rock Mill's Road. It doesn't appear to follow any property line, a river, a road, or anything. So I think that will be difficult to manage because it is general commercial, and where does it go? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll have to start the public comment period closed.
I don't think it's a surprise to anyone tonight that I had envisioned this to be a joint meeting of the board supervisors and the planning commission. It's really beyond my control, it was not noticed correctly. And so I have asked the chairman of the planning commission, who is selected by that body, to represent them and express any views on their behalf. I see Mr. Coler is also here. Mr. Fraser is also on the planning commission. But just in the handoff of the document from one body to the other, that would seem to be in order. And if it pleases the other members of the board, I would ask the chairman of the planning commission if he has any comments to add.
I'm sorry?
I would like to ask the chairman of the planning commission if he has any additional comments.
I think this affects my hearing.
Mine too. I apologize.
Thank you.
Does he have other things to add, Mr. Coler?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to say a few things, and I guess, I'm not sure how you're going to proceed on some of this, but I would like to address some of the comments that I've heard here tonight. The first thing that I would like to say is that it's very nice to see so many people that are engaged in it, have looked at it, and have made, you know, some thoughtful remarks and comments about it. And my only regret is that some of them, some of the bits that I see here tonight, but some of them, some of the comments they're making, I'm hearing for pretty much the first time, and it's unfortunate that they didn't come to the planning commission meetings and express these views, or just listen, because I think some of them have really been victims of some disinformation or misunderstanding about what the comprehensive plan is, and what it does, and how it works, and how it interacts with the zoning ordinance, and again, the maps. So I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to address some of those, what I think are misperceptions. First of all, the whole, I mean, I'm primarily going to focus on the maps, but I do want to address what Diane Bruce said about encouraging development. The language that's in the current comprehensive plan about encouraging or directing growth in and near the villages has been in there since the beginning. And the, as I appreciate it, and you know, I haven't been around since the beginning, but near the beginning, when I was zoning administrator in there early '80, and so that's about the time the first comprehensive plan was done. And that language has been in there because it's the corollary of preserving the most of the county in open space and for agricultural purposes. And so whatever growth we might experience should be focused around the villages, whether it's residential growth or commercial growth. And so that is, when you use the word encourage, I don't think it means that the comprehensive plan is a device to try and draw in or promote growth and development. It's a statement that where we do have it, or we're going to have it, it should be planned, and it should be focused around the villages. First, so as not to disrupt the primarily agricultural character of the rest of the county. As far as the maps go, and you know, pictures worth a thousand words, and that's what's in the current plan, pictures. And, well, I'm just flipping it open to Flint Hill, but if you go through it in the village section, you'll see that this is all that is in the current comprehensive plan. It's not so much it's all that's in, it's terrible, because if you look at, whether it's Flint Hill, or if you want to look at, I'll flip to the next one, Amosville, all there is is this aerial map of the village. And as I have said, and some of you have heard it before, so I apologize for you hearing it again, some of you haven't heard it apparently, and that is that, and I'm, look, and I don't think it's a big secret, I'm a zoning lawyer and a litigator. And if I wanted to challenge this plan, and if I represented somebody that owned any property anywhere in this box because of the fact that there isn't any map at all other than this aerial photograph, all this property and some of the zoning of some of that property is agriculture. And it encompasses an area that's way bigger than Amosville. I'll come in and say, well, they don't have an actual map, but they do have that aerial photograph, and arguably, that's the village. So when the plan says the, any growth should be centered or pushed in that direction, that's where it's going to be. One map I did show you is Woodville, and that's, to me, a very present concern, because if you look at the Woodville map, it's the same thing, it's a big aerial photograph of Woodville. And the box goes all the way out to the west. It includes some of the lane property, it includes a lot of land out behind the physical cemetery, for those of you who know where that is. And arguably, they could come in and say, hey, we're right next, we have this agricultural property that's in that box of Woodville, and it's right next to Village Commercial that's zoned for one acre. So we want to zone that, we want to rezone that to one acre zoning. Maybe there's an R2 category as well, and there's an R5. And so you could have literally hundreds of lots created based on the comp plan if you don't fix this problem. And that's how we got to the maps. That's how we got to the notion that in the future land use plan, there's got to be some maps. The statute says you have to have maps. That's part of the comprehensive plan. We didn't have any maps of anything except some very general things. Well, the comprehensive plan now has not only the village map, it's got scenic highway maps that we borrowed from, that we got from the Department of Highways. It's got a very detailed historic resources map of all the historic districts in the county, all the historic sites in the county that are recognized by the Division Department of Historic Resources are all on the map. So there's those maps. There's a map of prime agricultural soils. Some of that was in there, a lot of that's been updated. I think I'm missing one or two that we added just in this iteration in the last six or eight months. So we've put in a lot of maps, that's the guts of the plan. If you don't have any maps, you don't have much of a plan. Now, there's been a lot of talk about, well, if you include this or exclude that from the map, that affects our village, and so forth and so on. And I appreciate a lot of the comments that you made, and Matthew, your comments were very nice and so forth. I really do appreciate what you're saying, but I think you've got a real misunderstanding of what the comp plan is and what those maps are for. The comp plan says now, and it's said from the beginning, that we want to limit growth. We want to, basically, we don't see, I'm not, I don't have it right here, but I bumble around looking for it, but it basically says, we don't see a need to expand growth anywhere. That the existing zoning categories and the existing areas that are, that are quote-unquote designated for growth because that's the way they're zoned, is adequate for the next five years to accommodate any anticipated growth we might see. So for example, in Sperryville, you've got Village Residential, that's one acre zoning, not half acre like they have in the town of Washington and so on, it's a one acre minimum lot size. Then you've got some R5 around the village, then you've got some Village Commercial. And then you've got this kind of aberration that no other, no other place in the county has, and that's the Highway Commercial Zone. The planning commission went back and forth and back and forth three or four times. To look at the Highway Commercial, should we include part of it, should we include all of it? And the consensus was, and you know, I don't, I think if some of you had have been at those meetings, you see, it's not always so easy to get a consensus of seven people to agree on anything. And this is what we finally agreed to, that we should include the whole Highway Commercial Zone. We looked at maps, we had maps prepared by PD9 that didn't include any of the Highway Commercial Zone. And everybody said, well, that's too small. That's not Sperryville. The people down, you know, at the barber shop, they're going to be excluded, they think they're in Sperryville. So it's very difficult when you start to run lines, I agree, but you have to appreciate, we're not changing any zoning. We're saying these are the existing zones around Amosville, it's Village Commercial and Village Residential. That's the basis of the maps. The only exception is Sperryville, where you have the Highway Commercial Zone that stretches on, as somebody said, down to Hearthstone School, and it's also served by the sewer. And that's the only place where we included Rural Residential 5. I think there's two or three tracks that were proposed to be included because they are adjacent to the sewer system. It doesn't mean they're going to be rezoned. All it means is when you go to apply to rezone something, one of the considerations is it has to be compatible with what's in the comprehensive plan. So if it's not on the map of the comprehensive plan, that's a strike against you if you, if you try to rezone it. But we're not, the comp plan doesn't rezone anything. Everybody's today, and if they pass it tonight, which I know we're not going to do, but if they did tomorrow, nobody would have any more development rights to build one more house anywhere in the county because of this plan. They still, if they're, if they can't subdivide because they're in an R25 zone or an R5 zone, they're still going to have to rezone it to a more intensive use category. And when they do that, that's when they'll say, well, can the sewer really handle that? I don't know. And that's not part of the comp plan process, that's part of the zoning and rezoning process that comes later. So if landowner A, B, C, or D said, hey, look, I'm in the area in the comp plan map where I could rezone to R1 or Village Residential, so I'm going to apply to rezone it, then the planning commission would look at that property, and the board supervisors after us would look at that property and say, well, first of all, does it meet the comprehensive plan in general? Because if the answer's no, then you're already on pretty thin ice. But after that, you have to look at the water, the water table, the water usage, the sewer capacity, how's it going to affect the adjoining properties, how's it going to affect the value of adjoining the neighborhood, how's it going to affect the character of the neighborhood, and all those considerations, that's a rezoning. You know, I don't think that we've had a rezoning except for the old, excuse me, the old mill, which was kind of incidental, but we haven't had a rezoning in this county, honestly, that I can remember. In 25 or 30 years, we had had one rezoning application of like a major track so that it could be developed. We just haven't had it. And that's because it's driven, not by what's in the comp plan, it's driven by economics. And the economics basically aren't there. And when the economics are there, that's why what's in Woodville is a lot more at risk right now, because the property's up for sale. And if somebody buys it and wants to develop it, the question is, the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, you know, a lot of people I heard making comments, and I've heard generally, oh, we should encourage this, or we should have a sentence about that. The comp plan is not like a vision statement of what you want to happen, it's a vision statement of what you don't want to happen. It's like, no, it's like, we don't want this, we don't want that. And if we have it or have to have it, this is where we want to see it go. So it's a restrictive document, not a facilitating document, it's not going to promote growth, it's going to retard growth. And the weaker it is, it promotes growth because there's nothing to block it. And some clever zoning lawyer from Fairfax, or Manassas, or where, Richmond, or wherever, is going to come up here and chew this up and spit it out in little pieces. Because I appreciate what all you're saying, I've lived here since 1975, and I have seen what's happening to the county. And my goal, as an individual, and as on the planning commission, and just as a citizen, is to see this strengthen so that it is a better tool, and that's all it is, to restrict growth, not to promote it. But the Supreme Court of Virginia and all these cases, because guess what, the politicians are not in the pockets of people like Rappahannock. It's in the pockets of people who make money and develop property. And so there's all a matter of cases and decisions that say, if your restrictions are too restrictive, and they don't permit any growth, and they don't permit anything, then they're unreasonable, and they're going to be thrown out. So you have to kind of thread that needle, and you can't be too overly restrictive, and you don't want to be, you don't want to be overly permissive. And so I hope that answers some people's questions. Now, one thing that has come about the wireless thing, and I'm going to be real brief on that, and that is, I appreciate Cynthia Price's comments, I've heard it many times, the federal law and the state law say, we can't do, we cannot prohibit wireless and all those kind of facilities. The feds have taken it over and restricted us, and that's a factor that we have to deal with. The federal government is doing it, Richmond's doing it, even in this last session. Mr. Curry just sent me something a couple days ago, I don't think it's going to affect us, where the Richmond is taking away the local authority over zoning and planning, and they're saying, oh, you can't do this, like they've done with vineyards, and like they've done with breweries, and like they've done with agro tourism, and various other things. They almost did it with the Benet breakfast and the Airbnb industry, where they're taking the authority of localities to control and limit what's in their own community, and saying, oh, you can't have any restrictions on that, if it meets this, this, and this condition. So that's something we have to deal with. But as far as wireless goes, that's just out of our, I promise you that what is in there is the most restrictive thing that we can do and get away with. Because if you go any further, well, I know, here you say that, but you know, I am not a big proponent of it, but I studied this, I looked at some federal cases and state cases where the wireless companies went to battle with the counties, and this, what's in there now has stood the test of two different courts, state and federal. And so, you know, that's my general comments on it. I think that, I think it would be a tremendous mistake to take the maps out, it would be a tremendous mistake to water down the language that's in there. I mean, some of these tweaks and things like in the Arata, they're fine, I don't really have a big objection to them, but on the whole, our existing 2004 comprehensive plan is so out of date that we are basically walking around with our pants down around our ankles, waiting, and the only thing that's saving us is the economy, or economic factors that make it uneconomic to develop Rappahannock County. But we can do a lot better, and I think this gets us there. It's not perfect, it's like what Benjamin Franklin said about the Constitution, it's not perfect, but it's, it's as good as we're going to get for now. The interesting thing, and now I'm going to sit down and shut up, unless you ask me some specific questions, and that is this. You know, before I was put on the planning commission last January, the planning commission, I guess a year before that, voted to take things that, a lot of things, no maps, nothing about wireless and so forth, that's all been added. By the way, there's also the female solar, that's been added. All that stuff wasn't in there, everybody was ready to take it to public hearing and go far with it with the argument, and Mr. Coler standing right back here, he's the main one who made it, said, well, it's an iterative document, we can still work on it, we can we can change it later, we can fix this up and fix that up as we go along. And, okay, now I'm making that argument, it's a lot better than it was when he said that, and what he said is still true. And all of you people, I encourage and invite you to keep engaged with it, to keep coming to the meetings, to help out, because the Lord knows, we need help. We need people that with ideas, and you know, the more, my view of it is, the more the merrier. Everybody's got something to bring to the party, everybody's got a point of view, we've got a county of 7,000 people, and most of the time, most of the time, at planning commission meetings that we have, if we have five or six people, not counting the press people that are covered, that's a lot. So it's delightful to see you all here, and I really do sincerely hope they will stay engaged in the process. And as it goes forward, it is not written in stone, it's going to be reviewed in five years or less. And during that time, there's nothing to stop, people, amendments. And I agree that the maps and the villages and where they ought to be, the boundaries are something that should be discussed, great. But don't let a drive for the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I think it would be a tremendous, tremendous mistake to let this linger and go on and on and on, it's been going on and on and on for at least 10 years, when they first started five or six years later, to do the updated draft, I think in 2010. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conick, and I appreciate your staying around, and keep there, and follow up questions. Anyone want to go first on the board, in terms of discussion?
Well, I could, since for the last 10 months I've been the board president on the planning commission, I have to echo some of what Mr. Conick has said, and I guess I could disagree with him on one point, you can be wrong sometimes, you know. But I believe the planning commission-
But not tonight.
But the planning commission did reach consensus mostly every meeting on the journey. So we weren't able, we weren't able to reach some consensus during all those meetings. But one thing I'd like to take issue with, and sometimes people say things, and I'm actually do that probably more than most people, that aren't necessarily in your notes or something that you were going to say, which is one of those moments right now, but y'all have been duly represented on the planning commission and the board supervisors, we're your representatives. These are the elected representatives, the planning commission is appointed to be our body to weigh out some of these things, and to, as we say, flesh them out, and sometimes do the heavy lifting before it gets to us, especially with planning and zoning. So it's not fair to get up in a public meeting on the 11th hour and say that you haven't really been represented, you have been. And you can take issue with what I'm saying, and that's fine, but it's the truth, you have representation on the planning commission and on the board supervisors. If you don't like it, I don't know what to say about that. But we've worked hard, we've been diligent, the maps, the maps that were approved by the planning commission to be recommended to the board supervisors, it was a 5-2 vote. Mr. Henry and myself, we mostly wanted a little bit more area in the Amosville and Sperryville maps than what was proposed. I think Mr. Henry and I differed in the Flin Hill map. But that is the bulk of it, we tried to do the heavy lifting. And what this board now needs to do is decide what it wants to do with the information that's been forwarded by the planning commission, what we've received since then, and what we may dig up on our own, or we can refer it back to the planning commission. But honestly, it's, we've worked hard on this. There you have it, Ms. Jenk.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Any other thoughts, comments, anyone wants to make at this point?
Go ahead. So, the, back when the first plan was written, all kinds of country stores all over the county, and that's the place where people gather, and the community, it's a community thing, it was convenience, and they've kind of dwindled, they've gotten closed, have gotten closed, or more have gotten closed. And I think that's a shame, and when, I'd like to see one or two sentences in the comprehensive plan that would somehow open the door to encourage some zoning laws in the future that would make it easier for stores to reopen. I know that down on 231, a few years ago, that store wanted to reopen, it had been closed for over two years, so it wasn't allowed to reopen, and we had to come up with some kind of innovative kind of adaptive use, adaptive use in order to get it reopened. And it's a viable store, a lot of the community there really like it, there's a couple stores in my neighborhood that have closed, and you know, they, and now then, one of the owners will say they're thinking about reopening it, but you know, if they wait too long, they can't do that. So I would like to see one or two sentences in the comp plan that would allow us to, or make it easier for us to change the zoning a little bit on country stores where, you know, they don't, if they're not open for two years, they can reopen or just make it easier just to have, because it is the real heart of the community, is where the newcomers and the locals get together and know each other, and the community gets their exchanges ideas and gossips and whatever. So that's not really in the plan, as per se, and I know why it's not, because it never was, because there were stores all over the place when it was the first plan. So anyway, that was one thought that I had. The maps, I don't, I have to admit, I don't quite understand all the concepts around the maps, but I'm instinctively adverse to putting a belt around a village. I think that as long as we have responsible planning commission, BCA, board supervisors, people that want to do something that's near the village, and requires a special exception or a special use permit, I'd like to think that we can rely on the people that make, that grant those things, you know, have good sense. And so, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm saying I don't quite understand it, I'm not sure, I just instinctively, I'm opposed to putting a belt around a village. So we need to, I know that Mr. Currie's come up with some maps that are a little more vague, that they show what the zoning is currently, and that could be all we need for now. And like I say, once we get this process behind us, we will be able to head forward and tweak the zoning laws to take care of these things, because it is, what it says it is, is a plan, it's not, you know, it's never been set in stone because it's written here. And I, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Did you want to say something, or?
Go ahead.
I mean, I just wanted to revisit some of the things that were said at the last meeting and reiterated tonight. One is about maps. I was the planning commission representative from the board supervisors last year, so I think one of the things that gets lost in people coming in and off of commissions is that a lot of the work that was done this year on the planning commission was driven by the evaluation by Wiley Wilson of the plan that we had. Is it Wiley Wilson, or? No, it's the Berkeley group. Last fall, when we have a joint meeting with the planning commission at the high school. And there were basically two schools of thought at that time. One was that it was fine as it was and should go forward, and the other was that we should go back and do more work on it so that it would meet the state, you know, the requirements in Dakota, Virginia. And so diligently, the planning commission did go back and work through the recommendations of the Berkeley group. When I was board's representative to the planning commission, we sat down early in spring, Mr. Light was our chairman, it was in a work session, much less formal than this one, I bet Mr. Kohler remembers, and we all went around and we rated how much we thought we should go back to revisit the comp plan. So this was probably in March of 2019. I was the only member of that commission that wanted to go back and do the work and have meetings in the villages, and engage the public, and take more input, because every other member of the commission felt that it had been done adequately in 2016, and it did not need to be engaged any further, and it was fine to move on. I was the only member of that commission that advocated for more education of all of the commissioners as we moved forward in the process of the comprehensive plan. Every other commissioner at that time felt we should just move on. I wanted to do a lot more work on the comp plan, on my time on the commission. No other commissioner wanted to do it. As a result, when we got to the end of the process, we had the product evaluated by professionals, and it was not up to his part. And so we had to regroup and start back at square one and fill in what needed to be done. The work of the commission this year has been basically to work to the goals set out by the Berkeley group. What else did I want to say? The maps. The maps seem to have taken on a life where they are viewed as encouraging and including more in growth. To my mind, the maps are directing, it is not, we will do this here, it is, if you have an intention to do this, this would be the area that you would want to start to make a proposal to do it. It's not a free pass, it's not an automatic rezoning, it is directing what we may get in the future. It is preventative, it is excluding. And that is, that is something that somehow seems to have gotten lost in translation. Maps, these maps are not to increase, these maps are a way to try to make sense of what's already going on largely, and as much as I might like to think that we could go around to each village and have us tell them what they think they are, at the end of the day, we have to have something legally to hang our hat on as a definition, to hold everything together to where it would stand up in court if it were challenged. And that is why these maps look the way they do. Purely by chance, because I was in between a COVID briefing and a board supervisors, how were we doing that night there? In March, we were doing something, and I had some time to kill in between the two meetings, and I think it was a budget work session. And you all were having a work session here for the planning commission, and going back and forth between three or four versions of maps, planning district nine, Rappahannock Rapid Regional Commission, had been fine enough to draw up for us. When you looked at Amosville with certain inclusions, it was huge, it got excluded. That was a 4-3 vote, it's very tight votes as to whether it's more or less inclusive. Sperryville, without certain things being included, it's all chopped up, it doesn't make any sense. And you know, when you get to the end of the process, you have to have a definition that you're not out on a limb if the zoning should, or the planning should be challenged. So I do think it's important that everyone bear in mind that this is not a rezoning document, this is a planning document. It is about intentions, directions, and planning. And I just want everyone to please keep that in mind. In terms of the revitalization that Ms. Haynes brought up, I mean, I've always envisioned that that is the next step after we get the comp plan finished. I've talked to several people about that over the years, including members of the last Economic Revitalization Committee that we had, I think that product is probably 15 years old by now, but I've talked to some of the people that served on that and said, once the comp plan's done, doesn't it make sense to do this again? But until the comp plan's done, you don't really know what you're working with. But I do think that economic revitalization is the next step, that makes sense once the comp plan's complete. And we can easily impale people to do it, just like we've done previously, and come up with a report for us. So there's that. That's all I have. And of course, as always, if you have comments or see things that you want added to the comp plan, by all means, feel free to contact me via email and send me the information. I've probably submitted, how many, Michelle, 40? Typos, mistakes, misspellings, things needed to be capitalized, grammar errors to you over the past two years, and I thank you for your diligence in looking back and correcting them. And so it pains me to tell you, I missed a comma error on page 67. And at the bottom of page 67, there's the word "and" and a comma that's just sort of hanging there, and so that needs to come out. And then I know Ms. Peterson had already mentioned the juxtaposition of compromise and surprise on page 63, if you could make sure that that changes name as well. I do intend to go to the next, I guess I don't have any Amosville, the next water and sewer floor in meeting, and follow up while you can discuss. You're next.
I'm kind of embarrassed, you were in the minutia in identifying commas that need to be fixed, and I'm going to take a step back, look at the big picture. First of all, I just want to thank everyone on the planning commission, Mr. Frazier, I was eager to see you return to the planning commission, and I really appreciate your work, and Mr. Conick for pushing us through during a really difficult time and not being able to meet in person, and Mr. Kohler, Ms. Ishi, Mr. Henry, Mr. Light, Mr. Shul and all, have really worked hard, and that's clear. So I don't, I don't want my comments to take away from the hard work you put into it, but really to just put out some comments for consideration by our board, and I'm not saying these are things we must do, I think the document's close, I'm eager to get it done in a form that's acceptable to our board. One question I have for you, Mr. Conick, because I've been, I've been thinking the last few days about this, if you were to ascribe an adjective to this phrase, I'll give you a blank, let me see where it is. The Rappahannock County Comprehensive Plan is intended as a blank document. What comes to mind?
Is this match game? I think they just brought this up.
No, but it's, I mean, I'm just curious, because I think we might be on the same page.
Well, I don't know that I could say one word that goes in one-
I realize, and attorney worked on it, and I wish you would strive for a few words.
But I would say it's a document that is a framework. I mean, it's like if you compare it to the legal system of the United States, it's something like the Constitution, it's sort of the general thing with certain limitations, and the specifics are left to the zoning ordinance, which hasn't been updated in a serious way since 1985 or '86, and the subdivision ordinance, which likewise has not been updated since 1988, I believe. So the comp plan is, it's a, like I said before, it's sort of a vision statement, but it's not so much of what you want to see, it's a vision statement, which you don't want to see. And it gives you the guidelines to go and the implementing documents are those two, the zoning and subdivision. And I'll just say about, it hasn't come up, it's sort of caught up in a way. Our subdivision ordinance is so out of date that, you know, I was away for a while from about 1992 until 2002. And, but I, it was a totally out of the picture. I kept up with what's going on. I don't think there has been a single subdivision proposed that came to the Planning Commission and then went to the Board of Supervisors for approval since 1988. Not one. Everything that's been approved and all the changes that have been made in Rappahannock County, including the Lyle Farm, my favorite example, have been done administratively because they fall under one or another exception to the subdivision. It's not really a subdivision if you do this and if the lots are this size and so forth and so on. If all the lots are more than 25 or 50 acres, like the Lyle Farm, they took 1,100 acres and turned it into a residential subdivision with no Planning Commission review and no Board of Supervisors review and no rezoning. And those are the things, I hear what you people are saying, that those are the things that really impact the character of our county. Because now where we used to have an 1,100 acre working farm with cows and, you know, animals and tractors and one main house and maybe a couple of tenant houses, we now have about 25 houses. And none of it's being used for farming, except some people make hay so they can be in landings. But it's not really a working farm. And you've all that have been around for a while, you've seen that everywhere, where gradually the county is being converted from a primarily agriculture-based county, like the Comprehensive Plan envisions, to kind of a gentleman farmer residential retired people county, where farming is either a hobby or a tax write-off. But how many people in the county now are making money from farming, make their living from farming? Chris Parrish is one, I guess. What?
Maybe five.
Yeah, maybe. But when I came here in 1976 or '7, the whole Board of Supervisors were all farmers. Well, I mean, real farmers, except for Clarence Baldwin. I think he had a store, one in the country store, but this one right down here. Everybody else was, so that's a lot.
That's your final answer?
I'm sorry. I'm not going to ask any of the other questions.
I think you said.
That was a fill-in-the-blank.
We'll keep trying for pithiness. All right. So your word was framework. So it was a loaded question because the word, and you hinted at it, you use a metaphor I probably wouldn't hear. We're standing there with our pants down if we don't update this plan. So the word that comes to mind for me is protective. It is a protective document. And as, if it is, I don't know if you agree with that, but if it is a protective document that's premised on the notion that we are protecting something, what are we protecting? We're protecting Rappahannock County the way we all know and love it. And so for me, it's, when I look at the document, and I just counted, you did probably 25 substantive additions approximately throughout the document. I know that's a lot of work. I take a step back and I look at the document and I ask myself, does it as a whole present itself as a protective document? And I know it was the intro and all of the data and the economics section and geology and geography and all of that was written long ago. It's been updated to the best extent possible. But the document, when I take a step back and look at it, it feels like it's on its heels a little bit. Because you don't get to the good stuff, the stuff that counts for all of us, until you get to the end. And so, and I'm not, I'm not saying this to undo your work or to be critical, but I'm just curious, was during your Planning Commission work sessions, was there a discussion about changing the order? For example, the goals are great. And if you look at Bath County, I've been looking at other counties in the Commonwealth, similar size and geographic makeup, just to see how other people do it. If you look at the Bath County website, it says, "We, the Board of Supervisors of Bath County, Virginia hereby declare the following goals are at the heart of who we are as a county and we, all the work we do will be in the spirit of these goals." So when I weigh through all the stuff, it's all important, but I weigh through all the stuff, and if I'm a developer, like, well, what's this county all about? I think it'd be great, and it's not adding a lot of new language, it's just rearranging, say upfront, "Who are we? We believe Rappahannock County is a scenic county. We hold that, we hold that in great value. Here are our goals." Why can't we start with that and say who we are? Because in your view, is there a downside risk to it? Is this, should it be a passive document for some reason? Should we be backing into the stuff that counts?
Well.
Ten words or less.
You know, you're asking me, you know, if, like, to write an essay, like, if I had a pony. But I don't have a pony, and I didn't have a pony. I got put on the Planning Commission in January this year.
Yeah, I get that.
All right. And this document has been going around in circles, sometimes concentric circles, since 2010. And like I said about consensus, you know it, you're on a board. You don't just kick the door in and say, "Well, guess what, everybody? Now, we're going to take this and go, 'Pew, and here's my new idea.'" I think what you're saying is great, and frankly, my own personal view, but, you know, that doesn't count most of the time, especially when you're chairman. Because you, you're the one that's got to build the consensus. So a lot of times, you don't have the freedom to say what you just said. I would take the first five chapters and put them in the appendix somewhere, because who cares?
Correct.
Who cares how many acres or whatever and all that detail? And the Manahowacs used to have a trading post, which I fixed that typo because I had an apostrophe in Manahowacs. And for years, for like 30 years, it had that same typo. And every time, I would bring it up and they never changed it until finally, I think, Mr. Kirby actually fixed it. But anyway, if I was starting from scratch, sure, I would write a totally different document, like what you're talking about, that would pretty much start with Chapter Six, which is the goals and principles. And what I do want to say to you, and then the ten words are almost up, is that Chapter Seven had nothing in it. It's the future, you know, the future. And the future statement with no maps and no detail was exactly word for word the same since 1980. It hadn't been, not one word had been updated in the future. And so all those statistics and all that stuff, and that's what we have tried to do. And that's where the changes are about the future of wireless is in there, the future of solar, which Mr. Parrish is the one who initiated that really and brought that subject up, all the counties around. A lot of things were put in there to add on to that. And yeah, in the next iteration, yeah, I would give serious consideration to what you're saying because, you know, by the time you get to Chapter Six, if you're really reading it cover to cover, you're asleep.
Right.
I just want to give a kind of anecdote from my time on the Planning Commission about how difficult it was to make changes to the statistics that, for whatever reason, people are very attached to. We had a statistic on apple production in the county. It had not been updated since 1983, 1987. It was no longer tracked. It could not be updated. Our last statistic was 1987. I said, "This is our orders moment, folks. If we can't get rid of this table, we can't get rid of anything." But I agree, there's two thoughts, two schools of thought though as to why bury the meat of the plan. One is, make people look for it. Don't tell them upfront. Make them figure it out. Is that a smart strategy? I don't know. But that's what we've been doing so far. But that's the sort of attachment people have to the first two chapters. For reasons that I'm not really sure of, people are very attached to that information. Sorry, I didn't mean to interject during the comment period, but I just, believe me, we did go round and round with that on the Planning Commission during my time. Are we going to restructure it? Are we going to leave certain things out? Are we going to keep certain things in? And I would like a much leaner document, but, but this is the way it's always been and people like it like this.
You know, Mr. Whitson, I just wanted, because, Chairman said, is that?
Yeah.
Well, one second.
No, but I mean, this, we need to talk about it.
The Berkeley Group actually said that. And you know, the way these documents get written, most of the time, or when they started, suddenly the General Assembly came up with this idea that every county should have a comprehensive plan. And even today, a county must have a comprehensive plan, but zoning is optional. You don't have to have a zoning ordinance, but you have to have a comp plan. So that the VACO or whoever that association we belong to wrote a model plan. And we're still using the model plan with that exact structure and those exact tables and you guys go in your county and fill in the blanks of the 1970s or 80s. And Berkeley said that. And they said, you know, they kind of looked at it, and I remember the guy, when he came to your giant meeting, I think you were there because you were supervisor elected at the time, he kind of said, "Boy, we haven't seen one like this in quite a while." It was like an Edsel or something. Nobody was really using this format anymore because there's an updated model of comp plan and the one you've talked about is kind of what it's like. Just get to it.
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to talk too much longer and I apologize for already being long-winded. My favorite, my favorite statistic that I used last fall at a candidate forum was in 1920, the population of Rappahannock County was 7,300 people. And then we went down in the 50s and 60s, like 5,000 people. And we've been growing ever since. And in 2020, we're back to where we were 100 years ago. That's our growth trajectory. And I just find it interesting that we always, we're always talking about future growth as if it's inevitable. But I think that that's a false presumption and a dangerous one. And if you look at Rappahannock County and where it's been the last 100 years, not a whole lot has changed. And I don't, I don't want to lose sight of that. And going into the maps, I get it. I understand, I understand logically this idea. Mr. Parrish called it a belt, or it, I told a citizen recently, the concept reminds me like the Portland, Oregon suburban growth boundary to prevent, you know, the classic planning tool, prevent suburban sprawl. It also seems like a big world idea for a little community with 7,300 people. And I just wonder, and I'm open-minded here, I just, I just wonder, the regional commission maps that have been put out here basically just reflect what you said, which is current zoning. Isn't that, isn't that enough without establishing a boundary? And again, I understand the logic. I understand the logic. I'm not against you by any stretch.
Well, I just want some map. I don't want those aerial photographs to be conceived of as the map. And again, I go back, if I was challenging the ordinance in court, the thing that I would say is, "Well, the state law says the Comprehensive Plan includes maps." And they don't have any maps. I mean, they got a roadmap and they got that map, but the villages, they don't have any maps for it, but they do have these. So I guess that's their map jug and we're inside the frame. And so anything, any kind of map that you make reflecting current zoning is, is going to be an improvement. And all it's going to do is set, it's the, it's the, I can't think of the word. But it's, it goes together with the language, the verbiage that's in there that says that any future growth is going to be directed into that area with the villages. So you need something by way of a map to define what that is. And one of the problems, I'm just going to say quickly, of these revised maps, is that it's got a lot of rural residential included in it. Not the ones of the Planning Commission, which were more restrictive. The ones that are on board docs for tonight's meetings, tonight's meeting are all inclusive of other than village residential and village commercial. It's got, you know, we've got a zone in the county where it's in the ordinance of R1 and R2, but residential one and two acres. But to my knowledge, there's some R2 around. I don't think there's any R1 anywhere in the county. If there is, it's very likely one or two lots. But the point is, by including R5, if you go to your zoning ordinance, which I wish everyone would do once in a while, in Section 170-35, there's all the listing of the districts. And there's a description of what the district is supposed to be, which flows from the Comprehensive Plan. And the R5 district, it says that it's not the village. It says it's little collections because that's how it got to be a zone. It's little sub sort of old subdivisions or clusters of subdivided places before there was zoning, but it's not part of a village. It's in the agriculture sort of areas of the county. Well, if you start to make changes like that without fixing the zoning ordinance, some other developer guys are going to come in and say, "Hey, you put R5 over here into your village and we're just a little bit further down the road. What about our R5? Why can't we be in the village too?" And that's exactly the problem that you get. And I mean, in a way, I'm glad and in a way, I'm not. I'm unhappy that it's caused too much controversy, but I'm very glad that it's focused everybody's attention on the zoning map. Because the zoning map, when we spent a year and a half, just like has gone in, as much time and effort went in to the 1986 zoning ordinance as this comp plan, maybe more. And then suddenly, somebody drew the maps and nobody paid much attention to them. Three or four people did them and it all just got passed. And they really need to be revisited in a serious way.
Matt, here's four quick points, I promise, and then I'm done.
Well, it is a work session. We're supposed to talk to each other.
Yeah. So we, I did see some citizen comments on Chapter Two pertaining to geology, climate, topography, watershed, water resources. I just received those. So I don't know what the process will be to review those, incorporate them, but I just want to mention it. I did sit on the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, Mr. Sharp, who I think is left. He's a friend of mine. I think a lot of what he says is accurate, but he was talking mostly about the health of the plant. And that ignores, I think, a big piece of the system, which is the collection system out there in the village. And it's porous, to say the least. So I don't, in my mind, having been on the authority for some period of time, I don't believe it's a strong system. So I do, I do have some reservations about using that as a linchpin for a discussion about additional concentration of population or growth in the village. I just mentioned that in passing. Broadband Authority, obviously, we're trying to, trying to take some forceful initiative in that regard to, especially in light of all the COVID-19 stuff and the need for children and families and elderly to have decent internet access. I just want to make sure that whatever we adopt in the way of a Comprehensive Plan does not, does not preclude us from doing what we need to do for our citizens in that regard. And then a big question for me, I represent the Hampton Voting District, which has the unique feature of having a town embedded within it. The town of Washington has its own comp plan. The mayor in recent weeks has mentioned in the newspaper a couple of times about the town's need, possible need for approaching the county or a boundary line adjustment to accommodate growth around the town of Washington. I want to make sure that the County Comprehensive Plan somehow addresses the town of Washington and speaks very clearly about where the town of Washington fits into the overall plan. I mean, there's, there's some passing discussion, but increasingly, town government is quite active. Saw in the newspaper article recently about a mill, the mill redevelopment. They, apparently, the town. They, apparently, the town apparently cannot or will not extend sewer service outside of the town. So that, that may put pressure on us from a county perspective to work with, with the town on some plans for boundary line adjustments. And I just want to make sure that we're thinking about what that means for our county. So I'll work on that, and I will try to give you some feedback quickly.
Maybe another way to do that would just be to get rid of the town and have the county legislature system, and then we ought to...
Yeah. And so that's really all I have. I really appreciate you allowing me to speak. And again, thank you to the Planning Commission for moving the document along. And I think, I think we're getting there. It's close. So thanks very much.
And I just would say, if there are developing situations, I think it's wise to account for them, like it does toward the end regarding the affordable housing discussion and the study that's still going on with Rapidan Regional Commission. That, you know, I think the appropriate thing to do is mention that there is work being done and passing and a deadline when to expect, you know, updates based on that work. And then, you know, we can never wait for all the work on something to be done. It won't happen. So I think an acknowledgement of that sort is appropriate. And I mean, those sorts of deadlines will inform, well, we do need to revisit the comp plan because that work will be done also. The results of the census will be in, in a couple of years, and there will be needed updates probably in three years from now. So I think it's critical to update it. I view it as a living document. I appreciate the hard work that the Planning Commission has done on it this year. Also, all of the people that feed information into it, the school board, everybody down from fire and rescue, the parking rack authority. We made great pains to try to get updates to make sure that current situations were reflected accurately in the plan, which, which hadn't been done in a very long time. And I will, I will touch base with the Water and Sewer Authority and sit on their next meeting and see if they are issuing a statement as well.
What's, what will the process be? Our deadline is December 29th. So in terms of fixing typographic errors and providing narrative inserts or revisions, how are we going to do that?
I'm glad you brought that up. I think, and I wanted to discuss that a little bit this evening, I think it would be appropriate to hear, if nobody has any further plan, any further comments on the board, maybe hear public comment, and then we'll talk about the, what I think we'll be having to deal with at the November meeting and the best layout for that, if that's agreeable to everyone. Okay.
If Mr. Parrish wanted to say something, I have a couple of comments, but I thought maybe let him say something.
No.
Well, first, Mr. Whitson, I appreciate the amount of time you put into your questions, but I'd like to call for you next time. It's been said that Mr. Conick takes longer to say something than a Palmer Brothers song.
Is that good or bad?
I'm just putting that out there. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just bringing that point out. But I, I really feel bad that, for whatever reason, we didn't have this joint meeting with the Planning Commission members, especially since we're talking about not using the maps that were proposed by the Planning Commission. And I think really, we should have one joint meeting where at least the planning commissioners can speak on the reasons that we came up with these maps. I think, again, we didn't reach consensus, or we weren't unanimous on two or three of them, but we were on the majority of them, especially the commercial district. And I think, I think the map that the Planning Commission proposed for that should be, should be used, and I think there's good reason for it. And there's really not good reason for this current map. As a matter of fact, and I don't know if I should say it, but I'm not exactly sure the Board of Supervisors actually adopted a map that looks like that. It may have just showed up some kind of way. And it's the only map that we had, so it was used, kind of like what Mr. Smith was saying, that we just continually do things like we used to do. And sometimes there's reasons for that. But, and I could tell a story about that, but then I would be guilty of exactly what I just did. So I won't...
We wouldn't have that.
I'm sorry?
We wouldn't have that.
No, but I've got a good story about that. And, and really, I think that this may fall under that, that we just keep doing this, and there's no good reason for this, and it may not have actually been ever officially approved. It just kind of wound up there. There's no good reason to have a commercial district line that goes halfway up that steep It makes no, no sense at all. And what we proposed here, rule of thumb, and we haven't actually said that we would do that either, but rule of thumb, if the, the reason that we can't really have any commercial development of our general commercial district is because there's no sewer system. And we've always said, kind of off to the side, different ones of us on the board and former county administrators, that if one of the sewer systems at the schools had to be redone, which they're probably at their life limit too, that we would develop a sewer system large enough to take in the commercial district. Because obviously, and it has been done everywhere else, if the town of Washington extends its sewer system out to the commercial district, everything along that route would then be developable at a very high density. Not exactly what you want to do by accident. That happened in the town of Culpeper, when the farmer donated land for the Culpeper Hospital, that town built a sewer system out there. And I don't know that you could actually see where one part of town stops and the other part starts. It also happened in Warrington, where the one family donated land for the high school, the sewer plant, and the National Guard Armory, but they didn't take advantage of that. So they donated with, with the idea of helping the community and not really helping themselves. That's two, two alternative views. Same thing happened. So you may not want to push a sewer line from town out to the commercial district, but that's why this commercial district is not viable, because so much of the land is tied up in designated drain field or reserved drain field area. And there's no, no good reason to have that line way up on that hillside. That's why we proposed this map. So that was the reason for that map.
Well, I, I do want to, I guess, then speak about, if no one has anything else to add right now, what I would hope we could do at the November meeting, which is have the joint meeting that, you know, was originally hoped for this evening, but have a joint meeting at some point in November, if not at the regularly scheduled November meeting, then schedule a work session shortly thereafter in November. It's agreeable to both bodies and have a joint work session. Because I do think when you live with a document for so long and you put so much work into it, you know, there's been a physical handoff to the Board of Supervisors, but I think to really sit down with them and talk about the work that's behind it is, is the key to the process. And I'm sorry that we weren't able to do that tonight. So I'll follow up on that, and we'll get that scheduled. Hopefully, the Planning Commission could give us some feedback after their meeting next week.
Is it after tomorrow?
Oh, the day after tomorrow.
If you want to do it on your regular November meeting, just, I don't know, why don't you tell me? Or tell me a couple of dates, and I'll run by them.
Yeah, I'd say either the regular scheduled November meeting or another one day. Yeah.
So that would be the second?
Correct.
At seven?
At seven, at the high school.
High school won't be available.
Elementary.
Oh, the elementary school, is that an option?
Uh, possible.
Okay. That would be the other thing to check, I would imagine. And if that's not an agreeable date for, for the farm, we can do it another time.
All right. Can I let you know?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Is there anything else anyone would like to add?
Matt, I just, I want to say how much I appreciate everyone coming out. And there are a few, a few things in our county that everyone really can rally around in a positive way. I think, I think this has been a great discussion. Appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And personally, I, I feel privileged to, to be able to hear people and try to put thought into this and make a, a good document, at least from where I sit. So thank you to everyone who came out tonight, and thanks, thank you for the opportunity to wrestle with this. Thanks again to the Planning Commission for the work.
Anything else? I would just agree that it is wonderful to see such a robust crowd. Second public comment period. Anyone that wishes to speak, please raise your hand, be identified, stand and make a comment, and if you will apply. I'm not like, Mr. Conick, if you wouldn't mind speaking around for a moment, please, Ms. Butler.
I'd say that what Ron said is so true. That's what the original plan was, is that the commercial property, which my family owned, the septic system was to be built to include both schools. So it would be behind the elementary school, but they took the land and built another gym on it. But it was to include the commercial property. I'm very wary, I'm very knowledgeable that. The reason it went up the mountain, my uncle owned it, part of it, right behind his place, you know where that was. But the rest of it went up the mountain because it was owned by that fellow, and he wanted commercial property, Judge Snee. And the reason apples, we need to keep apples in the statistics, because Diane, Tom, and I were raised on apples.
The way we can bring them back is through the agriculture number, but the way that they used to register them, they don't do it anymore. Anyone else wishing to speak? Matthew?
Well, let you know, I ate an apple on my drive over there. I want to say, I really appreciated your comments. I found them really helpful. And actually, I agree with probably 90%, which I said.
You should never say that at a public...
I probably lost three or four friends for telling that, no. But I've never agreed with 100%, no matter what you said.
He told me wrongly.
Yes.
That's what she said.
But this impact to maps, I, for me, the concept and the value of maps, I think, is, is pretty clear. They do sort of function. And I think, as I read, you brought up an important one of just covering our rear ends in terms of being sued or looking inconsistent. So we, I think that's something that we have to be careful of in terms of a planning document, not to be ourselves exposed legally. How we get there is then, is a second issue. Also, with the idea of the map, it's, I didn't have a problem so much using a map, it's really the rationale for, for how you came up with a map. And for, for me and maybe others, that was obscure. I, and I was, I just haven't, didn't see what the rationale was, but, and so it gets more complicated. It was very, we talked about the sewer authority, you know, maybe it shouldn't be, and, and that gets back to kind of earlier points that, that I wouldn't be a slave to drawing a map just around the current sewer system. And I think more thought has to be given. And then going back to, to comment of the fidelity between this and, and the zoning, I think, is really critical. And I, I think that there's, there's a possible solution in here where the map begins to look like the zoning map. There's, there's a zoning, like a zoning gradient, where, you know, I would think, at least in my concept, in the town, that's where we have one acre lot, smaller lots, and then they get bigger as you go out, until you're, everything's 25 acres or more, except exceptions. And I was wondering if there's a way to, to come up with maps that look, that reflect the current zoning. And of course, if they, if we thought that wasn't, if there was a mismatch, maybe that's a cause for some inconvenience of the bodies, and maybe we should go back with the zoning, or maybe rethink our maps. But, but I think defining villages in a way is kind of an organic concept, where we've already said that villages, we cluster, we have smaller lots, and then they get a little bit bigger, and then finally, there's a transition zone, and they, and you're now in the, in the hinterland. So I'm wondering too, if the plan might make reference to the fact that our concept, our definition of a, of a village, where we would want to cluster more, more development, is, is really reflected in how we zone the land, that we permit smaller lots in these particular areas, and thus what we call villages. And that could, and so we get away from that, like the aerial maps, which are potentially dangerous, but, but if it's rooted a little bit more toward zoning, that we can point to something.
Thank you, Matthew. Yes, let's talk.
I learned a lot tonight, too. Life is full of challenges, and I appreciate what I'm up to do. Christine, I wanted to say I'm really sorry you didn't have a vote to get your time.
Me too, Barbara.
I think that would have, that would have solved some of the issues. And one of Gary's autosays is, I'm trying to zero in to see the details of where these lines are for these maps. I can't, I don't know, blow up and see what was where. And I think, I'm trying to, meetings, maybe it's not too much to do that anyway. There's some real information on what the lines are, and I think there is a reason for it. But I can find it as I was poking around on my computer, and that was completely whatever. So I think everybody could work, and I think it was just, if you work really hard to try and understand what makes this a process that would keep enriching our villages.
Very good. Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Well, I try to get to everybody wants before I let somebody come back for a second. Yes, Cynthia.
I have to say, I dismay the reason people who are against wireless technology are not showing up at these meetings, is that they became so discouraged. They became so discouraged. I mean, I can go out and talk to them, and they don't want to come, because they, they think it's futile. They think there is nobody who's done the self-education and understands it, not on the broadband committee, not chosen for the broadband committee, not on the Planning Commission, not David, not here. Certainly, David believes the main downside of wireless is it's ugly, so you hide it. That's the least of the problems. There are ways not to invite in toxic technology and still not incur a lawsuit. It can be discouraged. Where I take issue with you, Kier, is that you think we should...
Please direct your comments to the board, not to, to the board, not to board members.
Thank you, Phil. I can, Christine, thank you, Cynthia. Where I take issue with what was said, and I can't say his name, is that it attempts to conform your future actions to the COVID virus, and I think that's a mistake. If we, if we plan that this is going to go endlessly, we're going to have to live this way. We lose our cannon. And I think it's a mistake to go full speed ahead, with the carriers money and everything else to bring in wireless, because in my opinion, what differentiates us from Culpeper, Warrington, Madison, fuck here, is the technology, is that we have less here, we have cleaner air here. There's nothing that says we all have to be on cell phone, or that we all have to have broadband by wirelessly emitting from our electric lines or by 5G. We can have it safe, we can have it with fiber optics cables, we can have safe telephones. They don't have to be cell phones. I know that's not politically correct, but it is toxic. It is toxic, and it's a mistake to think you can bring in cell towers and just get rid of them. You can bring in stuff on the electric lines and just get rid of them. We're going to end up like the neighboring counties, and we are so far less developed than them. And that is a positive. That's why people come here. We start slapping this stuff up, and we don't even consider anymore the alternatives that are better and less polluting, we're going to lose cannon. We're going to become another COVID. So I think that's a mistake, and I'm very disappointed that, I mean, I've been, I've been giving information and testifying for... information and testifying for eight years about this, and it's like nobody's home, nobody's home. I know a lot of people who are aware of it, in this county and out of this county, but they don't sit on the boards. I'm sorry to say, I don't question your intent, I think you're good people, but I think it's the wrong direction for a lot of reasons. And I think we have choices, and we have ways to discourage certain technology and encourage other technology that's legal, and it's a lot safer and better. For example, in the library, we have fiber. It's not hard to hardwire the library computers to fiber, it's easy. But the library uses the fiber to back up wireless routers, so the library's full of radiation, for little children, for everybody else who doesn't have it. There are choices. It's a matter of self-education, and it's not from the television screen. It's not, unfortunately, we've got more and more censorship on the internet, but it is not from the television screen. So I just want to say that, and that's where I differ with David.
Thank you, Cynthia. You have a short, even, but.
Page Glen Jackson District. I would first like to commend the board for one of the more productive meetings we've had in quite a while. I think that was made more productive because you had a very knowledgeable subject matter expert with you here today. The last one that was like this was the joint meeting you had on the building committee. I thought that was a productive meeting. There's a trend here. Working sessions, not formal, all the other stuff, board meetings, seem to be a whole lot more productive. What I would like you to do is have these weekly, if not every other week, and cover perhaps the life and safety issues of the building committee, like this little theater over here, that still hasn't been done two months after we talked about it, or the numbers that the fire labor board needs, or you need, to address the fire and rescue staff. Those need to be separate work sessions, they need to happen now. Fire labor board can work until it's blue in the face, though we don't have the authority to move. We had an emergency services coordinator, what, two and a half months now, since he put in his resignation. We don't even have a position description, on a more or less an advertisement on the street. We don't have numbers for what our actual responses are, so we can't make an informed decision. There's a whole lot of issues on fire and rescue that we need your authority, working in a work session with the chiefs, your subject matter experts, and get this stuff straightened out. The comprehensive plan is very important, but these other two are life and safety issues. If you don't do something soon, I hate to say it, someone could die because of your inaction. Please have work sessions on these other subjects. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Just addressing a comment I heard two months ago, and that was Ron, the sewer system and the general commercial area. I don't feel like it's the county's responsibility to put a sewer system in there to accommodate the general commercial area. If somebody wants to come and build something in the general commercial area, let them put their own sewer system in, let them put, but why should the county go to the expense to build a sewer system to bring commercial activity? Talking about Carolyn, talking about Tom, Carolyn and me and farms and apples. Yeah, we were a big apple production area years and years and years ago, but Rapid County has never had the kind of land where you could have large farms. It's too hilly, it's too rocky, you can't, it's not like Southern Park here, County, Culpeper County, where there's a lot of flat land. And so, as things have progressed and changed over the years, it's the larger operations that have the business, it's not the smaller ones. The smaller ones can't afford to do it anymore. So you can bemoan the fact that we don't have all of these farms that we used to have, but it is not profitable for small farms to make a living anymore. That's just a fact.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Marston.
Thank you. I think I might have missed the timing a little bit, but I thank you, thank you, Ron, for explaining about the commercial plan, how it came about. I've been ringing up about the strangeness of the commercial area plan for over the past five years, and so finally, this planning commission took it up, and so I'm really, I'm much happier than I was. You still need a little bit of tweaking, but just to compare the actual general commercial zone and the map itself. Same thing can be said about this identification of the villages. Spiritville's a little different, but if you take up on an Aresville, what's identified in a planning commission plan as village is the village commercial and the village residential put together, right? So it makes sense, both are identified as village and zoning. Spiritville's, unfortunately, is a little different, but, so that's what identifies up in the old space. What's proposed, the replacement of maps, identifies actual zoning. Yes, we do need that kind of map, but that's a zoning map, and that should be together with zoning organs, not with a comprehensive plan. And I hope you get around to do the whole county's zoning map, much more detailed, so Barbara will be able to find her house in that particular zoning. And that is not belong to a comprehensive plan. So that's just my thought.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishes to speak? Do we have a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Mr. Parrish, for a second. Thank you, Mr. Parrish, I'll, maybe please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. She's a boo.